Good evening. To call this meeting to order, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic of which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all. We start with a roll call.
Council President Albertson.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Member McIrvin.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
And Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to start off with a couple of proclamations. And the first proclamation is Arbor Day, Earth Day.
Right proclamation, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees called Arbor Day, which is now observed through throughout the nation and the world. And whereas the city of Renton has been recognized as a Tree City USA since 2008 by the Arbor Day Foundation and employs an urban forestry division of our Parks and Recreation Department to maintain Renton's urban forest and increase quality of life for residents. And whereas trees reduce soil erosion, produce life-giving oxygen, increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business districts, improve wildlife and fish habitats, and contribute many other benefits. And whereas in 1970, Senator Gaylord Nelson introduced legislation designating a day in April as a national day to celebrate the earth and called it Earth Day. And whereas volunteers from neighborhoods, schools, businesses, and service clubs will have the opportunity to help the city of Renton celebrate Arbor Day and Earth Day this year at a city-sponsored event in Highland Park and Neighborhood Center on April 26, 2025. And city staff will help mark the occasion by assisting with tree planting to help restore and beautify the urban forest. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2025, to be Arbor Day, Earth Day in the city of Renton. I encourage all residents to join in this special observance. And witness thereof, I appear to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed the 7th day of April 2025. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
I'm like totally zoning out here. Uh, move to accept the proclamation as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Perez, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. All right, motion carries. And tonight, accepting our proclamation is Ian Gray, Urban Forestry and Natural Resource Manager. Ian.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. Ian, Gabriella, your Urban Forestry team. Breaking with tradition slightly this year, you don't have the T-shirts yet. But being the consummate tree nerd, I was at home pottering around and decided to make something out of some dogwood rounds. So you have a tchotchke come coffee coaster come paperweight in front of you with the rented and the rooted in Renton logo burned into it. So for your desk, whatever you want to do with it. Anyways, enjoy. Looking forward to another tree planting event. All of you are very much welcome. Look forward to seeing you on the day, April 26, at the Highland Neighborhood Center. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and next we have the Oh, yes. Photo now. Sorry. Okay, next up is National Volunteer Month.
Right proclamation, whereas the city of Renton recognizes and thanks the vital contributions of our boards, commissions, task force members, and volunteers who dedicate their time and talents to enrich the lives of our residents and strengthen our community. And whereas Renton's volunteers play a critical role in various sectors, including civic engagement, education, arts and culture, environmental stewardship, recreation. And whereas local community service opportunities are accessible through the city of Renton, faith-based organizations, civic groups, community organizations, and both public and private schools. And whereas, and whereas by volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we can come together to make a difference. And whereas this is a time to celebrate, recognize, and express gratitude for the profound impact of volunteerism. And now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim April 2025 to be the National Volunteer Month in the city of Renton. I encourage all the, all residents to join me in this special observance. And witness thereof, I appear to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed the 7th day of April 2025. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the city of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
Move to adopt the proclamation as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Perez, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. And tonight, accepting is City of Renton Volunteer Coordinator Tricia Nishi and Volunteer Troy Jaeger, who has volunteered as an adaptive recreation cycling coach and at Arbor Day and Day of Service Park Projects, and Volunteer Mark Ellen Kidd, longtime weekly volunteer at the Don Person Renton Senior Activity Coffee Bar, Bible Study Lunch Program Bingo and Grocery Cart Program. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City council members. Thank you for recognizing the 650 individuals who are members of either an advisory committee, a board, a commission, or volunteer at programs and special events in the Parks and Recreation Department, the Police Department, Community Economic Development Department, and Emergency Management. The dedication and hard work from our volunteers make a difference in the community, and we couldn't do what we do without them. And we are looking forward to acknowledging them and showing our appreciation to them later this month at the Don Person Senior Activity Center. And you will notice we have a brand-new thank you appreciation banner across Third and at Liberty Park. Brought to you by our donation by Symetra. So we're very fortunate in our community to have so many volunteers. So thank you for your support. And for these guys who get to be out there every day with our, with our participants. Thank you.
Before we move on, I want to say a special thank you to all our volunteers that, that volunteer at the city of Renton. We're very fortunate to have a lot of people that dedicate their time and effort to not only volunteer but serve on boards and commissions. And it's, we wouldn't be able to do our job without your support. So thank you. All right, next up is the administrative report.
Good evening. Save the date. The community garage sale will be held Saturday, April 12th, at the Renton Community Center, located at 1715 Maple Valley Highway from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This is a perfect opportunity to turn someone's once-loved item into your new treasure. Please stop by to chat with Chief Administrative Officer Ed Van Bailey at the next What's Brewing on Wednesday, April 16th, at the Berliner Pub located at 221 Main Avenue South from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. All ages are welcome, and check out the Facebook event for more details. Join us downtown and celebrate Erasmus Historic Landing in Renton, Sunday, April 13th, from 10:00 to 5:00 p.m. Enjoy a business window decorating contest, live art demonstrations, a gaming den offering interactive tabletop games, magic, the Gathering and Dungeons and Dragons, along with tournaments for more advanced players, and much more. This annual event, sponsored by the Renton Municipal Arts Commission, will bring downtown alive with a variety of activities for every age. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found on our website. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open. That's all, sir.
All right, thank you. Next up is audience comment. We do have a number of people signed up. I want to remind everybody that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. If a response was requested, please provide your name. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. When recognized, please step up to the podium, state your name, and city of residence for the record. And first up is Bailey Madillo.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. It's good to be back. I know y'all missed me. My name is Bailey Madillo, and I was born and raised here in Renton. And I'm here representing the Washington Bus, which is the largest statewide organization for young people politically. And here today, feeling a little jittery, literally just got back from Olympia where we were hearing executive session and debate over House Bill 1296, which is a bill that has been a lot around, a lot of conversation for young queer people in this state. A conversation that a lot of young queer Rentonites have been a part of. And as we engage in conversation around proposing protections and proposing resolutions that defend and protect queer people in Renton, I want us to center the people who are the canary in the coal mines, who are definitely the first on the front line when it comes to attacks on the queer community, which is young people here in our city. As a young person in Renton, growing up in Renton, and beginning to engage in civically at the age of 15, 16 with our city, I know deeply that this city has done incredible, incredible amounts of work to defend and protect our queer community. And especially when it comes to engaging our community and engaging young voices, who are often unresourced and unable to civically engage in a way that it, that brings more impact compared to other generations. I really appreciate all of the outreach and effort that this council has done. I'm here today to urge that you listen to young queer voices, and also that we follow our values and really embody being ahead of the curve and, and follow the regional and also very local needs of our community when it comes to setting the tone and setting legislation that defends and protects queer people, especially queer youth in Renton, in a timely, urgent manner with the respect that it deserves, especially as we unfortunately engage in a new, a new time of increased attacks on the trans and queer community. And as you know, young people are the canary in the coal mine. And we, we have already seen attacks on our community. Young people are at extremely high rates of suicide, self-harm, mental, mental health issues. And this has only been a positive, or rather, a very negative upward trend these many years. And I want to center that and really bring a local context as a young person who was raised in Renton, that this issue matters. And it needs to be dealt with urgently, respectfully, and with all of the capacity that it, that it demands and respects. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Next up is Adam.
Good evening. My name is Adam Hone. I'm a resident of Renton, Washington. I'm speaking to urge you to adopt the resolution for the LGBTQIA+ community here in Renton. I'm a transplant. I grew up in Northern California. I was lucky to have gay next-door neighbors who my family was great friends with. And I was able to kind of be, foresee a role model of someone who can just be out in a community and be loved and accepted. I'm lucky that my parents were really great friends with those individuals. And I'm also lucky that this afforded me the ability to come out when I was ready and not feel like I would be criticized or worry about like backlash. I moved to Washington because I had been visiting here for years on vacation, and every time I came here, it felt like home. I moved to Renton because this was the first place that I could afford to buy my own house on a retail salary. And I'm here in the state of Washington, in King County, because I've found community here. What I'm urging you all to do is to pass this resolution, because it means that I can be that role model for someone else, because kids will know that this is a safe place to be. On top of this, I was able last year to hire two contractors who are both trans individuals that were basically fleeing red states because their fear of persecution and were able to feel safe here in King County. So putting words to this is so important. Creating a proclamation is extremely important, because it says that you are safe here in King County. You are safe here in Renton. So I urge you to go ahead and go forward with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Amy Braska.
Hi, my name is Amy Braska. I was born and raised here in Renton, still reside luckily. I'm here to urge the council to support the LGBTQ+ Sanctuary Resolution. This resolution would ensure the safety and dignity of our LGBTQ+ neighbors, myself included. This resolution would promote equal treatment of all, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. We all have a moral responsibility to protect our families, our friends, our coworkers, and our neighbors. Through the passing of this resolution, Renton codifies belonging for everyone in our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Cliff Cawthon.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cliff Cawthon. I reside in Kent, and I'm a policy professional by day. Also, I teach at Bellevue College. So actually had the pleasure of educating a number of Renton School District students. And I'm here today to speak and support an LGBTQIA+ Sanctuary City Resolution. Right now, we live in very troubling and scary times. This past quarter, I remember sharing with my students that I found it really difficult to teach my American government class, because whenever we talk about checks and balances, I turned on news, I saw a president that cared about neither. And I saw an administration that was more than willing to erase queer people, trans people, black people, to look at people who come to this country and make it a better union every single day, whom their countries of origin he calls ish-hole countries, and has been on the record doing so, finding ways to either denaturalize them, terrorize them, and to fault and falsely and justly imprison them and send them to parts we know not where. And I hate to bring that kind of negativity in the room, but I wanted to lay all that out, because when I heard that this resolution was being considered, I sensed a sense of urgency when I thought about the long-term consequences of us doing nothing. That last week, in the city I live in, the city where I pay taxes in, own a home, with my wife, who is queer and who's amazing, who's here tonight as well to speak on this, that we saw, we heard a fellow community member from the nonprofit Utopia beg the Kent State Council to take action. And that council was silent on adopting a similar resolution. And when I think about my family, my mother, my grandfather, my great-grandfather, and think about everything through the Great Migration, through dealing with segregation, through dealing with Jim Crow in South Carolina and Kentucky, and I think about how slow the arc of progress, or rather, making progress is. And I think about how not just the Kent State Council, but so many other people are refusing or just failing to take action. I am terrified. So I ask you all tonight to be better. I ask you all to draft up and support a resolution that supports our queer and trans siblings, that says that you will protect them as a jurisdiction, and really set the pace for South King County. Be ahead of the curve, because we need that right now more than ever if we are going to remain a democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Monica Mendoza-Cawthon.
Good evening, council members, members of the public. My name is Monica Mendoza-Cawthon, and I am here to strongly encourage Renton City Council to please adopt, develop, and adopt an LGBTQ Sanctuary City Resolution over a proclamation. I am a queer, pansexual Latina, jurist-doctor graduate, legal professional, community advocate, who was born and raised in Renton. Although I currently live in neighboring Kent, as mentioned, I was born here in Renton, graduated from Lindbergh High School, with family still living in Renton. For years, I was quiet about my identity, because even if I was here in King County, I grew up fearful about coming out. It wasn't until I grew up and built community that I finally found the courage to do so. I feel lucky, because as I grew up, I realized that this community of King County, including Renton, was one of the very few places where other queer people can not only survive, but thrive and experience joy, thanks to all the hard work of queer and trans rights activists, movement leaders, and the allies who love us. However, I am terrified about our current political climate and what it means for my queer and trans siblings and family. Nationally and even regionally, we hear and witness stories of hate. We hear of a president and cabinet that does not want us to exist, and in some places in this country, my heart breaks because it is just not safe to live or exist in your truth. I am friends and chosen family with countless queer, non-binary, and trans people who have fled to this county, King County, for safety and community. For years, we've been a haven and safe harbor for all, but I urge, beg all of you to please do the right thing, do your part to do something to make sure that Renton is a safe harbor for my LGBTQ community. You must not capitulate to threats. We cannot stay silent and cave into fear. We cannot turn our backs on what is right. By adopting an LGBTQ Sanctuary City Resolution, Renton will be stronger and give a loud and resounding resolution that my community and trans siblings are safe and belong in Renton. Please do not cave into fear and instead lean into hope. Thank you.
Next up is Gordon Glasgow.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Gordon Glasgow, and I live in Fairwood, along with my wife. So I guess that makes me Renton-adjacent at least. I'm too, I too am here to support the Sanctuary City Resolution. Now, I'm an old guy. Up until 2012, I did not think that I had ever met a transgender person. I'd had a lot of friends who were gay and lesbian, and that was fine, but I knew nothing about people who were trans. That changed when I started volunteering at a support center for homeless youth in Seattle, and I met some young people who were open about being trans. That opened my eyes to the challenges that they face. Since then, I, I say that I've, I have evolved from clueless to ally to advocate to co-conspirator. That's the point that I'm at now. I think anyone who's watched the news understands what's going on right now. And, you know, I could quote you statistics about the rise in hate crimes, but I'm sure you're all aware of that. I think it's important to look forward. Now, whenever somebody starts comparing the situation in this country to pre-World War II Germany, there's usually a certain amount of eye-rolling that takes place. I would encourage you not to roll your eyes. I would point out to you that before the Nazis came for the Jews, they came for the LGBTQ community. And the very first book burning that the Nazis did was the Dr. Magnus Hirschfeld's Clinic for the Study of Sexuality and Gender. That's where it started. I'm very concerned that we're going down a very similar path. And I think it's imperative that we put a stop to it, at least here, as much as we can. Now, I also do a lot of volunteer work with PFLAG, which is the oldest LGBTQ support organization in the country. It's 53 years old this year. We are getting five to six contacts a week from LGBTQ, and particularly trans people in other states, asking if Washington is a safe place to come to. I would love to be able to tell them yes. At the moment, I can only give them a qualified yes. It's safer than some other places. But a resolution like this would go a long way to making me feel good about encouraging them to come here. Thank you.
Next up is Winter Cashman.
Good evening, council members and fellow neighbors. My name is Winter Cashman, Renton resident. Although I'm involved with Renton Pride, which I helped found with other people in this room six years ago, I'm speaking tonight as an individual committed to inclusion and belonging in Renton. I moved to Washington from a state that used emergency laws to strip domestic partner benefits and constitutionally banned same-sex marriage. I moved here 10 years ago and then found Renton when I could no longer afford Capitol Hill. Since I've been here, Renton has made commendable strides in affirming its commitment to the LGBTQ community. We've updated the city code to protect identity and expression, established an equity committee that includes LGBTQ representatives, elected an LGBTQ official, and added representation on civic bodies such as the Art Commission and the Chiefs Community Council. These foundational changes have significantly shaped the city landscape. Showcasing a Renton whose inclusion isn't just words on paper, but a demonstration of representation lived through day by day, meeting by meeting. Building on this foundation, I wanted to add to this conversation that in the last couple of years, as a community, we've continually assisted families moving from out-of-state with transgender teens, or just from queer people who are afraid of the state they live in. They're coming here and they're finding services and resources in Renton. We help direct them to barbers that give them haircuts, to places they can get bra fittings such as pencil in downtown Renton. These experiences illustrate the lived realities of people that are making this place their home in a city that not only welcomes them, but supports them. As we consider these resolutions, I urge us to continue to build upon and reaffirm these critical values. Let's ensure that Renton continues to be a beacon of opportunity and inclusion for the LGBTQIA+ community. Thank you.
Next up is Jazz Moisenet.
Evening, council and mayor. Came online, first time for everything. Here we go. So, you may be questioning why an LGBTQ protections resolution is needed since we are very much an inclusive city. Lots of proclamations, one happening tonight. Go Trees. In many ways, we have made significant progress in terms of equality and acceptance. However, the LGBTQ community continues to face significant discrimination, violence, and marginalization from the workplace and healthcare systems to housing and education. Despite the legal strides, many of our LGBTQ, ah, definitely nervous. Many of our LGBTQ neighbors, including myself, still live in fear of discrimination simply because of who we are and who we love. Late in 2022, late in 2022, Brewmaster Tap Room, which hosts Drag Queen Storytime, was shot. Late in 2022, Brewmaster Tap Room, which hosts Drag Queen Storytime, was shot. Police investigated it as a hate crime. October 2023, the rainbow doors at the United Christian Church of Renton were run over and heavily damaged by an unknown driver. This was not the first time that the pro-LGBTQ+ church had been vandalized. In 2024, a Renton man was arrested in connection with the vandalism of LGBTQ art three separate times in Bellevue. Arrested, something was done. Personal story, while trying to inform a neighbor about something that was important, I was met with "get off my land." Is that inclusive? I backed away slowly, as one does when you're met with a grizzly bear. As stated in Committee of the Whole tonight, please educate the public on what is in place, what protections currently exist, what can be made better after review. Please review. It's great that Renton follows state and county laws, but what specific city laws are in place to protect the LGBTQ community? Inclusion and protection are not the same. A proclamation is not legal protection. By enacting protections for the LGBTQ community, we send a clear message that discrimination will not be tolerated here, now, or ever. I look forward to what the council develops to protect its community. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Lexi Diaz.
Hello, City Council. My name is Lexi Diaz. I've been a resident for my entire life. The current national administration is actively making it harder to be a queer person in America. And, you know, we've heard stories about transplants, about people living here. But in general, Renton has been an unsafe place for the LGBT community for a long time, and I recognize that, you know, the council has done a lot of work to make that better. And it is, it has gotten better. But when I was talking with my queer community about this resolution, trying to get people to come here and speak, they said, I had multiple people tell me that they avoid Renton because of how unsafe it feels being here in comparison to our neighboring cities. Just to kind of prove that this is an issue, I have a few incidents that have happened that I want to share. None of these were reported to the police, so they would not be on any statistics or records, and I would not be surprised if there are plenty more situations like this. I had a old roommate that was a victim of being shot by a BB gun multiple times over at the Renton Transit Center. Just a month ago, somebody else at the same location was being yelled slurs at and chased into a local business to be safe, and they had to stay there for a significant amount of time while they were waiting outside before they could go home. Sorry, my phone. Renton can change this environment by passing a resolution to prove to these hateful people that this is not a place that we tolerate that. We can prove that this will not be tolerated. It is the absolutely bare minimum that we can do. And if we don't do anything, it will get worse, and it will expand to other communities.
Next up is Matt Handby.
Good evening, council. I hope to applaud all the speakers that went before me. They all were intelligent, well-spoken people, but I just need to make clear, I've got a different issue that I'm talking about tonight. So, without pause. Yeah, so, I sent a request to the council. You know, you're gonna see me every Monday until I've given up, and I am not one to do that, so you'll be seeing me. And this is about the current city law. It's, the reference is 4-3-100 Urban Design Regulations, okay? There's a paragraph here that talks about, "For properties along North Sixth Street and Logan Avenue North, between Fourth and North Sixth Street, applicants shall demonstrate how their project provides an appropriate transition to the long-established existing residential neighborhood south of North Sixth Street known as the North Renton Neighborhood." So that's current law, okay? And I'm here because there's a development being proposed on Logan, as everyone knows. So my suggestion is to change the reference where it says between North Fourth Street and North Sixth Street to North Third Street and North Sixth Street, because that would include this development. And I feel like maybe some of the requests I've made to you for interim zoning regulation or a moratorium, right, those are high bars, right? I've also asked, can you increase the parking requirement, which is probably a middle bar? To me, this is a little bit of a lower bar in that this doesn't require the applicant to change anything, but it requires them to demonstrate how their project provides an appropriate transition. And I think that's consistent with the Renton Municipal Code about careful signing and designs to achieve compatible transitions. The City Center Community Plan talks about an appropriate transition from the edges of residential neighborhoods. So, I'm just making an argument. I will probably ask each and every one of you if you think that's a good argument, and then I will ask you if you're willing to support that. So having said all that, I just want to remind you of a lawsuit. You may have heard about it. But in the lawsuit, it talks about some of the things the city has said. For example, that it's important to have careful siding and design treatment to achieve a compatible transition where new buildings differ from the surrounding development. Okay, that's Logan Six. The Renton Municipal Code also says it should be compliant and consistent with the comp plan and the adopted community plan and applicable land use regulations. And these are things I've referenced before about the transition from residential neighborhoods. And the comp plan has elements about natural light and direct sun exposure. It talks about protecting scenic views such as the sea to river, and also consider scale and context for infill to preserve privacy and the quality of life for residents. So I think those are all issues that are unresolved, and while the courts haven't helped us yet, we're hoping that the council will. So, thank you for your time.
Next up is Meredith Farmer.
Hi, Meredith Farmer, North Renton resident. First of all, I'm really excited to see so many folks here tonight. Thank you all for coming out to speak about the Sanctuary City Resolution. I know it is scary to get up and speak. I am scared all day when I decide to come speak in front of council, so nice work, everybody. I'm here today to say thank you to a couple folks in the Renton, the city. So, we had a couple events in the North Renton Neighborhood Association this past few weeks, and we had support from city members, specifically a community cleanup event that was on March 29th. When we first got to the event site, there was some open drug use, and we did call for assistance from Renton PD, and they were very quick and responsive and professional, as they always are. So we just wanted to thank Renton PD for the support there, as well as John Kalmbach and his team at Public Works for helping us facilitate the pickup of the litter after the event. So that event went great. Additionally, we had our chili cook-off event last Wednesday, and we had two judges from the city, Deputy Chief Jeff Harden and Chief Administrative Officer Ed Van Bailey. So, really appreciate them coming out to support the event, tasting chili, and helping us pick one of the winners. Finally, wanted to thank our neighborhood program coordinator, Remy King, who is assisting us ongoing with all of our activities in the Neighborhood Association. And maybe last but not least, all of the volunteers in our neighborhood from North Renton and throughout who we could not have done these events without you. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next up is Gabriel Jones.
Hey, folks. My name is Gabriel Jones. I'm a Renton resident, and I'm here to speak today, unsurprisingly, about LGBT protections. Firstly, I want to thank everyone who showed up today. My heart is full in ways I cannot explain. When I showed up to speak on this at council, I was speaking about an experience me and my family and friends had experienced. I had no plans. I had no idea what was gonna happen. I had no idea what to do. I just had to speak on it because it was something I knew was happening, and I had to say something. And, you know, I had no idea, and through Councilmember Rivera and Councilmember Van, as well as so many amazing community members, we have showed out today, and it's huge, and we're going to continue to care and fight. But I think if we want to talk about passing these resolutions, we need to look at, you know, why these local protections are important and what the plan is for our queer communities from these federal plans. As I'm sure many of you guys know, Project 2025, written by the Heritage Foundation, has been the guidebook for this new administration. Time and time again, a lot of stuff that was in Project 2025 is what's happening right now. Project 2025 calls for removing the term "sexual orientation" and "gender identity" from every federal rule, agency regulation, contract, grants, regulation, and piece of legislation that exists, meaning no grants, no money, no safety nets. We are under attack. Project 2025 is calling media involving queer relationships pornographic and calling for them to be banned. They would dismantle the Affordable Care Act protections against sex discrimination in health care. This is stuff that would not just affect trans and queer people. This would affect everyone. They'd reverse the 2024 Title IX rule depriving LGBTQI+ students, and in fact, all students, especially women and girls, of nondiscrimination protections in K through 12 schools, colleges, and universities that get federal funding, and on and on and on. That is why we are here today, and this is what awaits us, and it is terrifying. After I made this pitch to Renton just two weeks ago, a good friend of mine was hate-primed in Seattle. Four people jumped her, used trans slurs, and they beat her, hitting her over and over and kicking her, and even as she ran, they chased after her. This led to broken teeth, bruises, and many, many more injuries. This is why we fight. I stand here speaking for trans kids who will feel afraid to be themselves and can never imagine a life where they can exist as themselves. This is why we fight. We are for the queer people who want that white picket fence, two and a half kids, and a dog life, and face so much discrimination for wanting to live like everyone else. This is why we fight. At the end of the day, this needs to be deeper than just saying a commitment to supporting queer people. There needs to be deeper action because these attacks will cause a loss of life in the community, and we need these protections because these protections will absolutely do our best to stop what is happening at the federal level. We are scared. Ever, I, God, I am scared every single day to be myself, of wearing the dress and walking down the street I want to wear, but these protections show that I will be safe here and that my city will fight for me, and that there are plans in place to fight when the president comes for me, not just saying so, but in actionable steps to prove so. I am pushing for this resolution because our federal government wants me dead, and I will not go quietly. I urge you all to fight with me, to fight with us, because we will not go quietly. Because no matter what happens in this world, I, along with many of my trans brothers and sisters, and my queer brothers and sisters, will be there screaming the same thing forever: queer liberation forever.
Next up is James Webster.
Hello, hello, hello. That's short. Hello, my name is James Webster. Good evening, council members and city leadership. I'm a former resident of Renton, current resident of Redmond, and I am speaking today as the Chair of Pride Across the Bridge. I have a lot to say, so I'm going to speak quickly and try to get through it all. Increasingly and explicitly under this nation's administration, our transgender and non-binary community have had their rights removed and access to health care, public services, documentation, athletics, and safe spaces revoked. While Washington State is often viewed as safer compared to many other states, the harm is still here, and it is already affecting our communities. Without action, it will only get worse. I stand here today alongside many other community members who believe our cities must clearly share their values and protections, affirming our two SLGBTQIA+ neighbors in ways that go beyond symbolic gestures, assumptions that residents simply know their city is inclusive, or relying on our current and possibly soon-to-be-outdated federal and state protections to protect our city. That is dismissive and damaging rhetoric that harms all of our community members and cannot be where the conversation ends. In a time when the rights and safety of transgender, non-binary, and queer people are being actively dismantled across the country, clear intentional commitments from local leadership are critical. We're grateful to see the city of Renton exploring ways to affirm and protect its trans and queer residents. We were called on by community members who saw other Washington cities publicly passing resolutions that affirm the rights and dignities of their transgender, non-binary citizens. In response, we are calling on all of our East Side cities, including Renton, to create and adopt similar resolutions of protection. We strongly support the passage of a resolution that affirms and protects the queer community here. It is equally important that the final version reflects the lived experience of Renton's LGBTQIA+ residents. The resolution that we have shared with the city as an example to the city of Renton will benefit from the direct input of community members and grassroots organizations such as the Renton LGBTQIA+ Community Organization. Not all of the community who you serve have the privilege of safety, accessibility, or affordable childcare to be here, but deserve to have their city speak to them and meet them where they are. We know Renton strives to be a city that listens and leads with equity and inclusion, and this is an opportunity to do just that. These proclamations and resolutions aren't just words in a room, but direct tethers to our community that educate and inspire, telling our residents, workers, and visitors that these conversations are worth having, revisiting, and sharing. Please remember that no one in history ever thought it would happen to them. Everything is impossible until it cruelly isn't. My fear is not random bigotry. My fear is that the federal government will decide that my life and the lives of my community aren't real or worthy. My fear is that well-meaning people just doing their jobs will be the ones who show up and take us from our homes. I'd like to close on two quotes from Sir Terry Pratchett on the nature of banal human evil. "Evil starts when you begin to treat people like things." And the second quote, "People accept evil not because they say yes, but because they don't say no." Thank you so much for your time and for your ongoing commitment to protecting all members of our cities.
Good evening, mayor, again, all these speakers. My topic is different, but I support you guys. So, I'm gonna touch on the Logan Six and Renton High School expansion. Last Saturday, I was driving down Logan east-west through Street of Tobin, and all traffic is diverted to Airport Way. You'll have a real mess on your hands of all that confluence of traffic in one spot. And this will become a major issue if the city, because the city of Renton bent the rules to allow the Logan development to continue where the development should not have been. The second thought that crossed my mind when seeing the track event at the stadium is that people like to use the stadium for sports. They like to be able to sit in the covered stands, protected from the weather, and to have a better view of the field. They won't want to have to sit out in some open field by the Renton High School when this Renton stadium is so much nicer. They'll continue to book the stadium, and the proposed new fields on the Renton High School expansion plan will sit empty, and people will lose their houses for nothing. And that leads me to my third thought. If I was on the city council, a council elected to represent and serve the best interests of the people of Renton, elected to use a comprehensive plan to assist in guiding the course of the future of Renton, and elected to ensure that the players in this development game follow the rules, I would not have allowed Logan Six. I would have reached out to the property owner and let them know the property did not comply with development standards, and I would have assisted them to locate a more appropriate property where the units would be welcome and the space would be adequate. I also would have worked with the Renton School Board to identify different areas in the city where a ballfield would be more beneficial, referring them to the Renton Tri-Park Master Plan and collaborated with the school district to have the ballfields there. I could also have guided the Renton School District to purchase the Logan Six property area for overflow parking for the stadium. That would have been a more appropriate use for that lot. Anyway, I had more. My light is red, but you get the idea. I think that some guidance in the development of the city is needed. There's plans are there, and we need to be following them. Thank you.
Next up is Madeline Goodwin.
Hello, my name is Madeline Goodwin, and I am a resident of Renton. I'm also a queer woman-ish person. I identify as non-binary, gender fluid, and a host of other labels that boil down to say, I'm close to women, but not quite. That's not relevant. It's been a while since I've done this. I'm here because it is important in this day and age to speak out in favor of to speak out in favor of the people who are most vulnerable. A previous speaker mentioned that queer people are the ones that the Nazis came for first, and I think that we need to take that point to heart. We are heading in a very concerning direction. Just today, the Supreme Court handed down a decision that will have devastating impacts on anyone that they attempt to deport and make it very difficult for those who are a victim of that deportation to be reversed. This is just an example of one of the extreme actions being taken by this administration and its enablers. We in Renton can and must do better. This resolution would allow, would show the queer community that we stand with them and we believe in their protection. I think that's all I've got to say. I hope that you will support this resolution. Have a good evening.
All right, next up, we have two people sign up virtually.
Yes, first we have Alexis. You can unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, mayor and city officials. My name is Alexis Tran, and I'm a junior at the Brooklyn High School. I'm here to testify in favor of the city developing and adopting an LGBTQ+ sanctuary city resolution that protects and preserves the rights of transgender, non-binary, and gender diverse individuals in our community. As a young person, I've seen how crucial it is to have spaces where youth can express themselves authentically without fear of judgment or harm. Many of my friends are part of the LGBTQ+ community, and I can tell you that they face struggles that often get unnoticed or misunderstood by many. They shouldn't have to fight for acceptance or the simple chance to be who they truly are. In classrooms where teachers are supportive and the environment is welcoming, my peers and I have been able to thrive. Being open about our identities without the fear of rejection or ridicule has a profound impact on our mental and emotional wellbeing. When you remove the pressure to hide or conform in school, you allow students to grow into strong, confident individuals who contribute positively to our community. This resolution would be so important because it would emphasize the need to protect and support our youth, who are often the most vulnerable members of our city. We need to ensure that schools are safe and affirming, that youth can feel confident to express themselves to the fullest, and that they have access to the resources and care they need to thrive. By adopting this type of resolution, you'll be sending a clear message that Renton will not tolerate discrimination of any kind and is committed to doing everything in its power to protect and uplift young people, helping them grow in an environment that celebrates who they are, not what others think they should be. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope you make a commitment to make Renton a sanctuary city for LGBTQ+ individuals in our communities.
Odessa, you may unmute and have three minutes.
Hello, mayor, councilmembers, and everyone here today. My name is Odessa Palley, and I'm a student in Renton. I'm here to speak on behalf of LGBTQ students in our schools. Even though I'm not part of the LGBTQ community myself, I'm speaking enough because this is the reality that needs attention. The fact that someone outside the LGBTQ community is the one speaking right now should say a lot. It reflects the judgment, shame, and silence that many LGBTQ community members, especially students, are forced to live with. They often don't feel safe or supported enough to speak up for themselves because even with the progress we've made, some systems in our society still often bring them through a negative lens. And for young teens, this is especially damaging. At that age, you're still figuring out who you are. You're more likely to overthink, to believe the worst, and to internalize the way the world sees you. So when they experience or even sense exclusion, judgment, or a lack of representation, it confirms that fear that the world sees them in a negative light. Even though we've taken steps towards being inclusive, there are still gaps that make LGBTQ students feel like they don't believe the wrong. Those gaps show up in ways people often overlook, like students making small comments or using the word gay in a negative way, while teachers either ignore it or even worse, laugh along with them. In those moments, LGBTQ students are just sitting there, hearing it, feeling enraged or targeted, and knowing no one is going to stand up for them. If our teachers had proper training, training rooted in LGBTQ inclusion and awareness, situations like that wouldn't be tolerated. They'd be addressed, corrected, and used as learning moments. Let's make sure students can go to school feeling like they won't be judged for being their authentic selves. Let's make sure the LGBTQ young community don't have to carry mental barriers just to exist in the classroom. Be a space for learning, not a place where you have to worry about hiding who you are. Renton has done a good job in being an inclusive and diverse city. We've created spaces that feel safer and more welcoming, and we appreciate the efforts made to build that kind of environment. But there are still gaps, real ones, that impact people every day, and it's important that we don't be uncomfortable. We need to maintain and strengthen the work Renton has already started. We're asking you to help change the system so that our teachers, the very people who shape our minds to walk in this world, are preparing us to live in a world where LGBTQ people are not treated as other or seen as separate or informal. Let's align our system with the values we say we stand for: equity, inclusion, and belonging. Thank you.
All right, so we're on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. There are 16 items for council consideration. Are there any that you'd like pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Albertson.
Here you are. I move the council concur with the consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Albertson and second by Councilmember Perez that the council concur with the consent agenda as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to unfinished business. Council President Albertson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the committee of the whole has one report to present.
Right, committee of the whole. Committee of the whole committee report. This is regarding the City of Renton Disaster Recovery Framework. The committee of the whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt a resolution which adopts the City of Renton Disaster Recovery Framework, assigned by the council president.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
I move to approve the committee of the whole committee report as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the committee of the whole report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurvin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee has one report to present.
All right, Transportation Aviation Committee Committee Report regarding supplement, excuse me, supplement number four to a contract with KPG Somas Incorporated for the Southwest 43rd Street Improvement Project. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize a mayor and city clerk to execute supplement number four to Contract 20083 with KPG Somas Incorporated in the amount of $345,203 for the Southwest 43rd Street Improvement Project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor. I move the council concur with the Transportation Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurvin, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee has two community reports to present.
Right, Utilities Committee Committee Report. The first one is regarding a resolution authorizing appointment to the Metropolitan Water Pollution Abatement Advisory Committee for representatives and alternate. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve and adopt the resolution authorizing the appointment of Renton's representative and alternate representatives to the Metropolitan Water Pollution Abatement Advisory Committee. This is signed by the committee member and approved virtually by the chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
Yeah, I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Right, the final report from the Utilities Committee is regarding a professional services agreement with HDR Engineering for a reclaimed water feasibility study. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize a mayor and city clerk to enter into a professional services agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated for a reclaimed water feasibility study with a maximum amount of $199,395. This, too, is signed by the committee member and virtually by the vice chair.
And Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
And before I motion for this committee report, I just want to say how thoughtful of a process this has been to also look at our water source and what can, you know, to come up with, to have the contract being basically to fire it on engineering firms to look into reclaimed water feasibility study is important, given what we've had in the past. We have to conserve our water, and this is going to help a lot of our usage and just recycling water that really does feel good. And so I'm very excited for this feasibility study. With that, I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, we are on to legislation. We have three resolutions for adoption.
Right, the first is regarding the Disaster Recovery Framework, a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the City of Renton Disaster Recovery Framework.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember, or Council President Albertson.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
It's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Perez, that the resolution be adopted as read. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Right, the next resolution is regarding the appointments to the Water Pollution Abatement Advisory Committee, resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the appointment of Renton's representative and alternate representatives to the Metropolitan Water Pollution Abatement Advisory Committee, known as NWPAAC.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Van.
Yeah, I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the council approve the resolution, adopt the resolution as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries.
Right, the final resolution is regarding an agreement with the Eastside Transportation Partnership, a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an inter-local agreement with King County and East King County jurisdictions for the purpose of supporting multi-jurisdictional planning and coordinated transportation planning regarding regional transportation entitled "Eastside Transportation Partnership Agreement."
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McGurvin.
I move the But maybe they'll watch this later and think, you, I do appreciate it. Appreciate you giving your lived experience. And I know that the incredible Chrissy Roland was taking many notes. So I know she was a part of the conversation earlier, and we will be going forth with that first steps of developing and doing that outreach. So thank you again.
All right, thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, April 14th, at 2:30 PM, the Community Services Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and via video conference. We have three items on the agenda. The first is the appointment to the Renton Senior Advisory Board. Second is appointments to the Equity Commission. And third is emerging issues, specifically Human Services Presentation Preview. And that's what I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McGurvin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have no meetings to announce, but also want to briefly also acknowledge the speakers that came forward tonight, and particularly those who put themselves in an uncomfortable spot, took themselves out of their comfort zone to do something that they believed in. So I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Prince.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, April 14th, at 4:45 PM, the Planning Development Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and by video conference. And we have one item on the agenda: Commercial Lease Program Evaluation. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, April 14th, at 3:15 PM, the Finance Committee will be meeting at the council conference room and also via video conference. There are 13 items on the agenda. One, compensated evidence technician at Step E, salary grade PN58. Two, Penny Love Addendum 225, LAG 21001. Three, for cultural sustain support program grant. Four, utility bill leak adjustment request for Dean Wafner Heritage Hills Apartment 005992000. Five, reorganization of the Finance Department. Six, joint-funded 2025-2026 Human Service Agreement with Sound Generation's Meals on Wheel Programs. Seven, joint-funded 2025-2026 Human Service Agreement with King Anti-Sexual Assault Resource Center. Eight, 2020 Washington State Department of Health Snap Incentive Agreement Amendment 7. Nine, DOG Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification Use of Funds to Purchase Equipment. Ten, MOU with Seattle Police Department for Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Eleven, Interagency Agreement with the United States Department of Energy for Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Run Fund for 2020. Twelve vouchers. And thirteen, emerging issues, including consul travel and expense reimbursement policy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have community meeting enough, but I wanted to thank our community members for coming out and speaking. And in fact, some of you are actually putting yourself on your physical state of your life in danger.